I'll call the April 13th, 2020 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. Now, I was told I have to read pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, subsection 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar options. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. Second thing I am supposed to let everybody know is when we have motions on the floor, every member has to weigh in and vote yes, no, or abstain. And Mary's got to go to every one of you to do that, to record the vote. Okay, no more all together and all that other good stuff, okay? So those are the two points I had to bring up. First on the agenda, plans not requiring subdivision approval, we have none. I'm going to skip down to action items. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 27th, 2020.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
I'm sorry. Who seconded?
Roger.
Roger, okay, Roger seconded, okay. Any, any issues? No issues?
No.
Okay, all those voting in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So let's do one at a time.
Yeah, I got me, aye.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye, Craig, he gives a thumbs up too.
Craig.
Aye.
And aye.
Roger and Christine, thank you.
Okay, on the, on the same vein, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 24th, 2020.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
Go ahead, Craig.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Craig.
Thank you, Roger.
Any issues with it? There being none? All vote, all those voting in favor? Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, Christine abstained.
Okay.
Carrie. And entertain a motion to prove the minute, approve the minutes of March 9th, 2020.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Any, any discussion, any needs, whatever, and there being none? All those voting in favor, I will vote aye.
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 Okay, the time being 7:05, we have a public hearing. I'll first read the public hearing notice. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Oxford Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 13th, 2020, at 7:05 PM in the Oxford Town Hall to consider an article on the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on May 6th, 2020 that would amend the Oxford zoning bylaw by adding a new chapter, 24, entitled Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Energy Systems. The purpose of the chapter is to regulate the development for large-scale ground-mounted solar by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, monitoring, and removal of such systems that address public safety, minimize impacts on natural resources, and to provide adequate financial assurance for the decommissioning of such installations. Additionally, the Planning Board is considering an article on the warrant to amend Chapters 4, 5, and 6 of the zoning bylaw to amend the residential, commercial, and industrial use tables to add the term "large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems" to the use tables and to amend the zoning bylaw to allow the one-year moratorium on large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems to expire. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time, date and place designated, or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the Planning Board. And, uh... Mary, did we receive any comments from the public as far as written comments?
We have not received any written comments from the public.
Okay, yeah, and everyone is aware that we've gone through town council at least twice on updates to the bylaw. And does anyone, does anyone on the board have comments regarding the final copy that Mary sent to us earlier in the, I think it was last week?
Uh, what was the final, what was the final comments on the number that we can regulate?
The final number that we put in is 15. Although town council does comment that this may be subject to challenge, chap, general law, Chapter 40A, provides that no zoning bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems. Unlike marijuana, no statute authorizes towns to limit the number of large-scale systems, and without authority, such limitations may conflict with the uniformity requirement. I recommend that you limit size and number by limiting where they can be constructed. You may want to consider an overlay district, but he also got back to me with further information that there have been no court challenges yet on the number. So the first draft had it at 15, I mean 10, and based on town council's comments, I upped it to 15, so it's up, up to the board members to discuss.
My particular opinion, my particular opinion is that we've got enough conditions that they have to meet in this new chapter, and it's going to make that further, furtherly more difficult to even obtain, I think, the number of 15. You know, with the amount of clearing that restricts, they can't go into a wooded forest and deforest it and then the whole bit, because we only limit to 30% of a, so that's going to limit the parcels that these things can go on, and they have to be large parcels to begin with. So in the last 20 years, we, what we've got, we've got less than, less than 10? We've got seven maybe?
We have, we have six on the ground.
So that, even if we leave it at 15, that means nine proposals have to come in front of us before we even get to the point where any challenge could be made.
Right.
Does anybody have any idea, like in terms of the surrounding towns, whether any of them have been inundated with these large-mounted systems?
Charlton, I think Charlton has, I think Charlton is the one we got this information about putting in a limit, because the people in Charlton were concerned that every time they turned around, a new system was being placed.
Do you know how many they end, they have?
I don't know how many they have, no.
I'm not sure either, but that's, that's a good point.
I think they have at least 20.
And they have a lot of small, smaller ones too. You look at the one on Route 20 there, I mean, it can't be more than four or five acres big. And, you know, they, they, like, they're right, they kind of popped up everywhere. And I know we're talking about larger scale ones, but that, that, that was my only biggest fear is that at some point, you know, there should be a limit to how many you could have in the town, because there is so much, and you're right, there is only so much space that they can accommodate them, but, you know, they get more creative and creative, uh, putting them in. And I think that's what happened in Charlton where they kind of put them.
I'm comfortable with leaving it at 15. More so than leaving it with none, I mean, with, with unlimited. I think at least at 15, it gives us as a town something to look at if it gets close to 15.
If it gets close to 15, then the bylaw could always be amended.
There you go.
Yep.
Other than that, I was glad that we were able to get the pilot information in there. I know the town council didn't even like that initially.
Right.
But we have to let them know that that's what we're looking for, and I, I think it's good to put it on paper, so at least they know what they're looking at.
Are we, are we proposing anything the town council is dead set against?
I don't think so. The major issues were the number of systems, putting a limit, and the other issue was the, um, the pilot, that it wasn't the planning board's purview to... Let me see if I can find my email. Um, but no, I don't think there was anything else that was, that he was dead set against.
Well, my opinion, my opinion was town administration really wanted pilot verbiage in there to tell developers that you're going to pay, okay? Bottom line is, you're going to pay something for being allowed to put in one of these systems in, in Oxford. There should be some payback for the town. I was glad that the Conservation Commission looked, reviewed it and gave Mary some input to put in there as far as site stabilizations and what they're looking for, uh, pre and post and the whole bit.
Isn't, um, isn't that pre and post drainage discussion that she was talking about, isn't that already built into any development in the, um, in the Commonwealth of Mass?
Well, you have to keep in mind, Craig, that we have our own stormwater management bylaw that may be a little bit stricter than DEP mass regulations.
Okay. So, I'm sorry that I don't know it, but do we call that out in the regulation, in this regulation?
Do we call out the stormwater management regs? We do.
That the developers need to adhere to the town of Oxford's stormwater management?
Yes.
That's part of the application process, so they, they have to file.
Right. Whether they have to file it with the Planning Board, if there are no wetlands, or with the Conservation Commission, if there are wetlands, yes, they, they are required to adhere to our bylaw.
Anything else? If not, I'd like, uh...
Yeah, I, I actually had, uh...
You had something?
Okay.
Yeah, a question about section 12, um, the financial surety. So initially, we had a, um, kind of an arbitrary amount set in there at $50,000.
Correct.
And, you know, now we're saying an amount determined by the Planning Board to be sufficient. Who, who is, um, you know, who can determine that? You know, would it make more sense to have like a, a, some percentage of the, the cost of the project or something? I don't know. I mean, that just seems a little too loose.
It's probably site-specific, Roger. I think it, that's, I think what town council was saying is how can you arbitrarily place that? It's got to be, it's got to be based upon the proposal. And they're given the plan, he's, he's still saying the Planning Board has the right to ask of that, but he's basically saying that, uh, the project, it, the project's got to deem the cost, not the cost deemed the project type thing, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but I mean, is there any way that we can find, you know, some sort of guidance to come up with a, you know, a realistic figure there? And I know it's going to be, I know it's going to be case, case by case, but, um, it seems like, you know, a percentage or something would make sense.
The way, the way I see it working is we have a third-party reviewer. We could ask the third party, who are engineering people, we can ask those engineering people
Right.
to deem a cost to do that as stabilization.
As we have in the past, asking DPW for their input on...
At them too, but I mean, we would have the third-party person that would, uh, be reviewing the site and have all the details as far as size, slopes, whatever, and he'd, he'd know the, uh, type of drainage system that's proposed and be able to come up with a figure for that stabilization. And that'd be before they got a permit to do anything. They'd need to supply that payment before they would get their building permit.
Right, yep, prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's something we definitely need to figure out, how we're going to establish that number. Did I, did I read something at one point where we were asking the developer for that amount? The decommission amount?
You know, that came with Norman, Norman, when we were discussing about the last developer that had like two or three of these things, these solar projects going in town. Norman basically came upon that arbitrary figure to demand that because of the problems we had on the first. After we had some problems on the first when he started, we threw those into the modifications so that, uh, they couldn't run away and destabilize the site. We were afraid of the, uh, we're basically afraid of the developer walking away from the project.
And at that time, I believe our town engineer, Jared Duval at the time, thought the 50,000 was sufficient to stabilize a site.
Can I ask a quick question? This, this number we're talking about, we're talking about the number, is it a number that we think will cost the town if they had to, to decommission it and get rid of all everything?
No.
Or this is just to, like a bond for a subdivision?
No, this is to stabilize it.
To stabilize it, okay, all right.
Just to stabilize it in the event the applicant abandons construction of the project or in the event construction of the project threatens public health and safety, including the integrity of the surrounding property.
Right, so we should, we should, just like a subdivision, we should have the developer supply us with a proposed number, and then our consultant will double-check that number.
Yeah, it can be done that way too.
Yes.
I think if that's the way, if it's just to bond the thing, so to speak, then we'll handle it just like a subdivision.
Mr. Chairman and Mary, um, my name is Doug Pope. I don't want to interrupt the, the board's discussion, but whenever you already, I am a developer and we're representing, uh, but the potential interest of Mr. Winsky in, in your town.
Okay, we'll make sure that you have your opportunity to comment, thank you.
Yeah, okay, is it, is Captain Sellers there? Does he want, does he have any input as far as this particular...
I read the bylaw that Mary, your proposal that, that Mary submitted. I don't have any issues with it, I think it's rather good.
That's great to hear, thank you. Mary did a great job, believe me, she had a...
Usually does.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, let, anyone else on the board at this point, let the developer speak, Doug Pope. Come on up. Mary, get him on there so we can see him.
Okay.
He's muted. He's muted.
Oh, you gotta unmute yourself there.
He has to unmute himself.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, good. Number one, Mary, thank you for sending me the, the notice.
Sure.
Uh, again, my name is Doug Pope from Pope Energy. We are developers on behalf of investors. And we have spoken, spoken and met with Mr. Winsky, and he has expressed an interest of placing approximately three, potentially three megawatts on his site. Uh, maybe more if he elects to, to, to use some woods that have been, that have grown back from a former pasture, depending, and also depending what the town ordinance allows at that time. Um, one of the things I wanted to bring up, so the board has an appreciation for what goes on relative to, um, making application for, in the town of Oxford. The town of Oxford, it has more to do with the, with national grid of what's going on with the general, um, into the interconnection to the grid process. Um, national grid is going through what they call an ASO study. In other words, the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts has encouraged solar, and there's a sufficient amount of solar that's happening that it's, it's no longer staying at the distribution level, it's backing up on the transmission level. And so that there's a very long integration process. So as it sits right now, and I'd be happy to forward, um, Mary, the, uh, something that was the national grids recently published, that will indicate that even if we had something that was approved today, something to get something as large as three, four, or five megawatts approved may take three and a half to four and a half years
Okay.
to go through their process, and which is completely beyond the developer's control and until the state. And we are, we are very actively involved with the Department of Public Utilities. We're on one of their working group for interconnection processes, and they're looking to marry the difficulties of, of interconnecting solar that's being encouraged by, um, state policy, which I'll get back to in a minute, and the, and the, the connect, the interconnection of those. Right now, there's a huge gap. The state's trying to encourage the placement of solar, and yet, a three, or four, or five megawatt system's going to take three and a half years, four and a half years to get interconnected. So there are changes coming down the pike, but just to give you an appreciation that there's a huge, uh, process that goes on beyond the town approval. Um, and as I, and I'm glad to hear that you were, you were speaking about the, the number of, of solar projects. I'm not familiar with, with what else is going on in town. And, um, but my concern was picking winners and losers. There are, we are experiencing a tremendous amount of interest from farmers who are using solar as a means of staying in business. They can make potentially more money with solar than they can with some of their, their, the things that they grow or the animals that they graze. And the state is encouraging what's called agricultural solar, which means we put the panels eight to 10 feet up, eight feet if they're vegetables, and really 10 feet, uh, up if, if they're going to be grazing animals. And they're, they're encouraging agricultural solar to help keep the farmers in business and to allow the dual use of solar and agriculture on the same parcel. So there's a lot moving, and it would be my hope that the town would look at, at, um, again, not picking winners and losers, because some of these long processes that we have to go through to get things interconnected, you know, they, there are people that are going to start the process and, and, and they, they won't get, uh, they won't get all the way through, then other people will pick it up, um, just from the standpoint that this is a long process. Uh, I think relative to your, your stabilization, I think you're right on there. Um, your 50,000 is right in the right ballpark. And I think you can, you could very easily get a developer to give you a number, your third-party engineer could figure out what it's going to, how much land's going to be just, is going to be disturbed, and what's going to keep, what's, what's going to take to keep the stormwater from, you know, being interrupted on other people's property or interrupting a stream down, further downstream. So, I mean, I think you've got a, a lot of things. I understand why you're going through the process, I'm just concerned that, that you don't, hurt people that you would otherwise like to help. That in a perfect world, if you had the ability to help them, you'd like to do that. And, um, so I'd like to, you know, you know, thank you for the ability to, uh, you know, to speak here on this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Captain Sellers, you're all set with the way it was written then? Yes. Okay, I want to, thanks for joining our little meeting, so I just want to make sure you were heard. All right.
Who is the town of Oxford person? Is that a person or?
That is...
That's a videographer.
That's the video guy.
Oh, okay, all right.
He's recording the meeting, so they can go online, and we can watch it again if we had so much fun the first time.
Excellent.
Okay, well, story goes, uh... I think we've got all the input, I think it looks great.
Yep.
And, uh, when we go to make a motion, I want, I think the motion should reflect exactly the way it was advertised. So, so, so just, those who make the motion just say, "Based upon the public hearing notice", because it reflects all the type of articles that, uh, that we are addressing at this point. So, first of off, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, seconded by Craig. Okay, any further discussion?
Uh, can I just make one comment?
Okay, yep.
Really? I'm intrigued by the, uh, what do you call it, agricultural with the solar panels up high with the, you know, the animals underneath, that I thought that was kind of interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Just saying, throwing it out there.
Okay. I think we're, we're regulating it based upon its size. I don't get, the panels don't have to be on the ground.
Right.
They can be on a barn, they can be on a, a large extension with stuff underneath it even, I guess, if it's structurally sound, I suppose. But, uh, yeah, there are ways of, uh, being creative, I'm sure. Okay, so we got a motion, it's been seconded. I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote yes.
Okay. Passed unanimously, okay, now we go to the motion.
Okay, so, so Rich, you're looking at right, right off the agenda, the proposed, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment? That's what we're, we're, we're accepting?
It's everything, it includes, it includes what we just talked about, chapter...
Yeah, chapter 26.
14, I mean, 20, 24. Chapter 24, and also, well, yeah, I guess that's all, all this is, all we're dealing with here, Mary, is just that right now, right? When we do the recommendation, we're recommending the other stuff, right? Because we don't have nothing in front of us as far as...
You don't have anything in front of you? Basically, for each use table, it's going to be, uh, large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems allowable in all zoning districts with a special permit and site plan approval.
Okay, so do you want it to reflect all that stuff in this, in this motion, or just chapter 24 at this point?
I, I think all of them. All of them, because the, the way the, it was presented to the Board of Selectmen was the solar bylaw itself and any, um, any additional related zoning bylaw.
So the warrant articles on the, uh, will actually have the verbiage in the warrant articles of the change. It'll show the change, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, Jeff, just, um, mention the public hearing notice.
To, uh, accept this article as it's been, as it's been written on today's date for the zoning amendment, Chapter 24, large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems, and to amend Chapters 4, 5, and 6 of the zoning bylaws to amend the residential, commercial, and industrial use tables to be added with term "large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems", and to amend the zoning bylaw to allow one-year moratorium on large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems.
To expire.
To expire.
Yeah. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there was a fight again.
Now, Roger won. Roger won.
Roger won, okay, thanks Roger, appreciate it.
Winner does to the older guy.
Not much older.
All right, so, any discussion?
Yeah, was there a date that you updated this, that should that be in there or not?
Uh, the last revision I made, I made on April 7th. I don't, I don't think it necessarily matters.
We don't, doesn't matter, okay, let's talk.
Okay, any other discussion? There being none? If being none, I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Carried unanimously.
Mary, is there, is there a chance that when you have a minute, whatever, down the road, you can email me the final copy?
I have already done a final clean version that, yep. I can, I took all of.
Sent out earlier.
I took all of town council's comments out. And, yep, I can email that before I leave the office tonight.
Oh, it doesn't, sometime, doesn't have to be tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone have any old business?
No.
Okay.
You have new business, right?
Okay, we do have new business.
Yeah, where is that?
Mary, will you introduce that new business, please?
Oh, sure, so the town manager has advertised for the town to have a economic. Developer? Or planner, director of economic development slash town planner. So she has received a few resumes and she would like to have the board's input per our town charter. To have the board members look at their resumes and make a recommendation on, on the candidates.
Yes, so I, town manager called me today and wanted to know what the procedure was. I can, I can only say I've done it once in my thirty years on this board and it was when I first started in year one. We had. Resumes of town plant, town engineers at the time Joe Zineski was hired as town engineer.
Wow.
Okay, and we reviewed all the, basically what I told her was we reviewed all the resumes. And we, we all basically got together and ranked them, one, two, three, four, five, and six. And presented it to, at that time, Dennis Powers, Power? To. Go ahead and make a selection out of that, so using our number system and whatever he could negotiate and whoever was willing to come. And Joe was at the time at the top of the list, so he came on board.
Mm-hmm.
The town, the town manager's pro, problem is right now is. She advertised it and got it and she wants to jump on these people now. Uh, but she doesn't want to wait till our next meeting to get this done.
I think we, Rich, I think we should, I think we should meet these candidates.
Well.
I know, I know she's in a rush, but I really, I really think we should meet them as a person and see how they act and see what their thoughts are.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, Craig, because again, you can write anything down on a piece of paper and it can all look good. Until.
Yep.
But I know that's gonna be difficult in these times to, I mean, again, we could schedule another. Meeting, Rich, and, and try to get some of these candidates to come on, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, a good planner, a good planner can be hard to come by. So we don't want to potentially lose out on a really good candidate. You know, we haven't had a planner for ten years, so it'd be nice to.
Yeah, no, it'd be nice, I, I mean, last time, last time. I think we ranked them and then the town manager suggested which ones I, we might have met him, Craig, and I don't remember. I was young on the board.
I think we did.
I, I think we, I think we might have done that. She doesn't want to work within our timeframe.
Yeah.
Her suggestion was, well, get a couple of, get a couple of us as a subcommittee and do it and then get back to the rest of the board. My opinion, and this is such a tough time to have any head togethers with anybody you're going through right now to have a, a particular meeting. That, that's why I was, I was kind of disappointed she didn't, she didn't. I don't know when she got these together, I, I would have hoped they would have been in our package this time, so we could have at least had the. The, their resumes in front of us.
So, Rich, do you know how many people are, how many people are we talking about, you know?
Said six, I think, up to six, she just said up to six.
So, so the open meeting laws being what they are. Is there anything preventing her from sending us the resumes and us looking at them ahead of time? Or is that something that has to be done in a meeting forum? I mean, it's not like we're interviewing them or anything.
No, I, I think it's something that could have been placed in our packet, so we could have reviewed it. I, she just called me today, okay, and I know our packets went out on Wednesday, so I don't know when she closed her. Request for applicants, I don't know, it could have been today as far as I know. You know, it could have been last Friday. Okay, I really don't know. But she basically wants me, us to plan a, a meeting to. At least start the process, review it. And I don't know, I don't know how she can plan to have applicants come in front of this board under these conditions, I don't know. I don't know.
They would have to participate remotely.
Yeah.
And that makes it tough too to interview somebody remotely, yeah.
I just want to say that I don't think, I think it's very important for the town to have a planner. And I, I don't think it's a good idea if we rush through it. Even if it takes. A couple weeks or a month to do, to meet with these people. I, I don't think it's a good idea to be forced into a. You know, one week trying to, trying to decide on these people. Just my opinion.
Well, how would you feel about this? She mails out the, she mails, we get a package. For a special meeting we have, let's say, next Monday at nine, at seven o'clock. We have to advertise it. It's, it's an open meeting, I mean, at least just to receive those and discuss the resumes. Maybe rank them to a certain degree, maybe she can, she has particular. She has particular candidates in mind, okay, if she didn't have this thing to go in front of the planning board right now, I think she knows who she would really like. Okay, maybe we'll, maybe we'll both blend in fine, okay? And then in our next meeting on the, what, the twenty seventh? Maybe on the twenty seventh, maybe on the twenty seventh, we can interview, because we have no other, at this particular point in time, we have no other business for the. The second meeting in, in April. So we could spend the time to interview maybe the top four, I don't know.
And I, I think it's important that we refer to them as, you know, whether it's candidate one through six or whatever, I don't think. Calling the candidates, especially if it's a public hearing.
Well, I don't think it's a public hearing.
Yeah, where, where, yeah, where it's personnel, is that still come under purview of public meeting or? I, I thought it was different when it came to personnel.
We have to do this in executive.
We can go to executive session. On, on the twenty seventh, if you, if we have to do it in executive session, we can discuss it in executive, executive session, I have no problem.
Yeah, I think that's.
Open the meeting and then go into executive session and talk, you can talk names and whatnot, it's not in the record.
I think that's a better way of approaching it than.
Okay. Open, I'm open to meeting next Monday also.
Okay, I, I think we gotta do that as a minimum, just so we can. You know. Maybe evident that there's only a certain few that we may even be interested in, I don't know, I don't know what she's got.
Yeah, can, can we ask her to get, get the resumes out like tomorrow so that we can, you know, look at them before, because maybe. You know, if there's half a dozen, maybe some slam dunks and the other ones are, you know, we don't even want to talk to.
Yeah, some of them are from our state, she told me that. Some of them are from New Hampshire. New York.
And is that something she could, could, could those be emailed to us? I mean, it's gonna take forever for you.
I don't see why not.
Yeah.
I think we can get them emailed to you.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to set up a special planning board meeting for April tw- twentieth. At seven PM. At seven PM and with only one agenda item and that is to.
Review, review the, review applicants for town planner.
Yeah, discuss applicants for the town planner post. And, and probably maybe go into executive session also.
Hey, Rich, could we also get a copy of what the like job description is along with the resumes?
Yeah, I think that'd be great, cause, cause this is not just the town, I, from what I'm understanding, it's not just the town engineer. It's more than a town engineer.
It's not a town engineer, it's.
Economic developer, I think.
Town planner and director of economic development, yes.
Yeah, we need that anyway to see how good they are to the, to the position, I agree with that, Christine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
And if the, if the, and if the town manager wants to attend, Mary?
Yep.
That's all well and good too, that could help her, that could help her as far as getting the right people that she'd like us to see.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Might as well tell her that. I, I'd say a majority of the board wants to meet the people prior to. Making a recommendation. She was trying to get away without doing that, but. So be it.
You think, you'd think we would have known that this had gone out?
I know, I, she kind of, she went out through the back door, I didn't know anything about it. I didn't know she already went out for it, I didn't know she had funding, I thought it would be some, I knew it probably would be something that happened after town meeting. Okay, because then you, you set your budget anyway, but.
Right, and it's in the budget to, to hire a planner, director of economic development. And it was actually, actually in last year's budget to hire a part-time planner, economic.
Well, that's what she said, she had money.
Development director.
They could start before the new fiscal year, that was her intent.
Yep, so we ended up with a new building inspector last year and getting the planner just kind of was put on the back burner. Unfortunately, so.
Yeah.
This year we have money in the budget. Or. To hire a full-time planner.
Okay, so did I make that motion?
Um, I have a motion, I have an.
I thought I did.
Entertainment, a motion to entertain.
Yeah.
Or motion to schedule, but that's all I have.
And I did April twentieth at seven o'clock.
I'll move it, I'll move it.
Is that you, Craig?
Yeah.
Okay, and a second?
Christine seconded.
Okay, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye, well, let's do it one at a time.
I like thumbs up, but Craig.
They do it aye, one at a time, so they really know.
Yep.
Aye.
Jeff, aye.
Aye.
Craig, thumbs up, aye. Roger.
We don't know who you're pointing at, aye.
I know, I know, I know you don't. Carried unanimously.
Christine?
I hope we don't have to go through this too much longer.
Yeah, that was a rough one, Rich.
I know.
You did a good job, Rich.
We'll be meeting next Monday.
Next Monday and it'll be a quick meeting, it'll be fairly quick meeting again, as long as we get our documentation that we can do some homework on it. We can have some, some discussions on that, okay?
So Mary, it'll be the same thing, you'll send another link to us by email.
I will send you another link to the remote meeting, yes.
Okay. Well, it's, it's a good platform to hold a meeting, I gotta say, it is, it's my first experience with it. It's okay, I, I followed, I followed the Board of Selectmen, you know. God help us when we have a lot of people, public people that want to come to one of these, I don't know.
Yeah.
I hope the thing ends before we have any, anything like that, so.
So Rich, for what it's worth, I've actually used this as an interview platform before.
Oh, yeah.
And it works pretty well, I mean, you, you know, you can have three or four interviewers in a room with a candidate and. I don't know. It can be efficient once you figure out the nuances of it.
I'm glad I'm not the host, that's all I can say. A lot of finger pushing going on over there.
Not really. You guys, you guys are behaving very well and you're not all talking on top of each other, so you're doing great.
Yeah, Harry hasn't had to mute anybody yet.
I haven't had to mute anybody.
I'm like a normal man, Carrie.
Hey, Rich, just for general knowledge, Charlton has thirty ground mounted solar systems.
Wow.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
There's thirty of them.
When it goes, when it goes into overdrive, that's what could happen in a heartbeat.
Right.
That's, yes. That's why limited is a good, good idea and then deal with it when it happens.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion?
All set.
You're all set? And we need, we need Christine to.
Christine, you gotta unmute.
Sorry.
Long meeting.
We need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Roger seconded.
I'm off my.
More discussion, all those voting in favor, I vote aye.
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 I vote aye.
Okay, carried unanimously, thank you very much, guys.
Be safe, guys.